All right, it's been seven o'clock and I call the meeting to order. We're going to do this in a little bit different order this evening. I would like to just make one comment to the council. We've been hearing a number, a little bit of feedback about the not being able to hear us on the YouTube feed. So if we can make a point, just to talk directly in the microphone, just be easier for residents to hear us that aren't here. So our first action tonight is oath of office for Kevin Miller. Many of you may be aware that once my election, I was elected to mayor, I had two years left on my remaining in my seat. So with that, after I was sworn in earlier this month, or in January, we did vacate my seat. We took the couple of different ways we could have done this. We could have done a special election, we could have just appointed someone, or we could have asked for applications. So we went the route with asking for applications. During that, we had 11 people apply. At our last meeting, council meeting, we put, got that down to five finalists. Last Thursday, we interviewed all five of those individuals. And with the results of that, we voted unanimously to offer Kevin Miller a position on the city council. So I think, just a little bit of history, Kevin's been in real estate for years, residence for years, member of the planning commission, has really served this city well. I think that in, that knowledge and his time here is going to serve us well as another member of the council here. So with that said, I would ask that Kevin come up and Jolene is going to do the oath of office.
I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of the State of Minnesota, and that I will faithfully discharge the duty of the incumbent member of the City of Forest Lake, Minnesota, to the best of my judgment and ability.
Now we'll get this meeting going how we normally do. Can Jolene create a roll call?
Councilmember Erickson.
Here.
Councilmember Larson.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Valento.
Here.
Mayor Roberts.
Here. And if you're able to, please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Hey, council, we have an agenda in front of us. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Great. Next agenda item, open forum. This is an opportunity for citizens to come up and speak to any city-related matter. We'd like to limit it to three minutes. And when you come up, please state your name and your address. Anyone interested in speaking tonight? Right. Thank you. Next item, seven, consent agenda. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion, Mayor.
Second?
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Here he is. Regular agenda item. So we have the Veterans Memorial Committee update, and Dave Adams, I think you're going to introduce this.
Yep. We have Ron Miller here from the Veterans Memorial Committee, and he's going to give a brief update on the project so far.
Welcome, Ron.
Hello, Mayor and Council. So I'm Ron Miller, the chairman of the committee. We're a group that were organized in 2008 under the prodding of World War II veteran Hall Ewer. He's now deceased, but our goal was and is to honor U.S. veterans, either living or deceased, by having a memorial site in Lakeside Memorial Park. We installed, we reinstalled a bronze plaque that was done in 1977, and we put that plaque on the southwest side of the gazebo. There's a rock about this high, and it's on the north side of that. It's a plaque about two feet by one feet. Has a listing of like, I think, 24 or so individuals who have died in the service of our country. Since 2009, we've had a Veterans Memorial Pavers Program, where anyone can honor individual U.S. veterans by purchasing a paver, which is then engraved with the veteran's name, rank, service, unit, et cetera, and their time of service. They, those new paver orders are, they order them at the city desk here, and then twice a year, I collect up those orders, one time in March, and then again in August. And then I'll call the person that was the point of contact for that veteran that they want to honor, and I talk through which of the engraving should be for that person, based on how much we can fit into the space, whether it's the large one, which is 16 inches by eight, or whether it's a small, which is four by eight. So anyway, then, then we go ahead, twice a year, Memorial Day, and then again in Veterans Day, we dedicate those pavers. They were placed along with the 370-plus pavers along the sidewalk there in front of the beach area in the restroom park there. And our next phase will continue the paver sales, but we will put the pavers in a raised area. The ones that are there now, we'll pick those up, put them in a raised, raised area when we're done with the upper. So our next phase, though, will continue the sales, but for the past few years, we, especially Mark Fineman, have been designing the next phase. Best describing it is a three-minute video, which Paul of LATV has made for us. And there we go. So is that coming out? Or you can see it? Do you guys see it too?
This community has shown its commitment to honor our veterans through the sale of memorial pavers, each one a testament to the service and sacrifice of those who came before us.
How do we get the sound up louder? Is that on?
Thanks for the continued support. These efforts have paved the way for something even greater. Now, we stand at the threshold of something truly special, a tribute like no other. Here, in this dedicated space, we envision a memorial that speaks to the courage and strength of our heroes. The central sculpture will be a focal point, surrounded by a stunning arrangement of sentinel stones, symbolizing the unwavering presence of those who have served. As you take in the view from the west, the memorial stands proudly, a powerful reminder of those who have given so much. Each detail has been carefully considered, designed to evoke deep emotion and reflection. The central raised podium is inscribed. War ravages the world around it, yet the spirit of service, love, and freedom endures. They emerge from the chaos. Atop this podium rests two war-damaged walls that are collapsing inward, yet a core brace with emerging bronzed eagles holds them at bay, denoting the American spirit rising from within. A military family is shown separated by war, emerging from each wall, from subtle to full dimensioned bronzes displaying strength and patriotism. A male soldier saluting the American flag before him stands at one, while a female soldier holding a child guards his back on the other. The American family rising above the chaos. This is more than just a design, it's a message, a tribute that will endure for generations to come. Together, we will create a space that forever honors those who have given us so much. We are so close. Let's finish this mission together.
See, I couldn't do any better than that. You know, you know when you're going to be outdone, you go ahead and, yes. Anyway, so we've raised over 80% of the funds that we, that we need to build the Veterans Memorial to be complete. Donations are continuing to come in, and our group is confident that 100% will be reached, you know, this summer, summer or fall. Even if that it's not, if the 100% isn't achieved, the current amount that we have will be enough to complete everything except for the center sculpture, which you could always have the base done and whatever, and you could always put that brass, big center sculpture in there later on if, if we don't have enough money. So we are asking the city council to approve the, the city staff to prepare the plans and specifications for the project. Final plans should be completed by late spring, this spring, early summer 2025, and will be brought back to the city council for the plan and specification approval and authorized advertisement for bids. We would like to do the underground site work this October, and then complete the project in the spring of 2026 with the pavers and sentinels and sculpture. On the funding side, the Minnesota Legislature has appropriated $350,000 of funding into different types of groups. And our city said before that you guys would cover the, you know, like $100,000, which would be that underground utilities work, there's a large six-inch water pipe and a valve right there where we are, that needs to be rerouted. We can, you know, abandon it where it is, but reroute it with a new pipe and a new valve. Other donations that we've gotten recently include the Hallberg Family Foundation, $25,000, and they're going to do two more installments. The American Legion, $10,000, and we're going to do another $10,000. The Legion is, Running Aces, $10,000, Lions and Masons combined, $10,000, VFW, $5,000, Carlson Family, $5,000, Roberts Family, $3,500. Thank you. Mary Lindberg Trust, $2,000. Then there's also a bunch of donations that are less than $2,000. And then also, the profits, so to speak, of the paver sales is around, it's over $70,000 that we've done over the, over the years. So we need about $120,000 additional funding to complete the memorial, and we, we believe that we can, we can get that done and go to the rest of the way. So, so we're at that, that ask, and Dave knows the particulars on that is more than I do, so if you want to, Dave, you want to mention, go from here?
Yeah, he covered pretty much all of it, just that, why that $120,000 they have left, the center sculpture, the estimate was about $106,000. So you add your 10%, that gets you right around 120. Everything we've heard and seen and talked about, that that can be put on right away or at a later point. So I think, if they still want to keep this timeline with the funding that they're getting from, through the state and these donations, to try to keep that moving, get those plans and specs done, and then, you know, whether or not, even if they don't have that 100%, get that site work done, get the water main relocated, all that below-ground site work done this fall, you know, wait till after Labor Day, till, you know, the part, the usage goes down, and then, kind of make your mess, and then the spring, finish up your mess, and then restore it. So you really should be all back together by, you know, summertime next year. And that timeline, we want to try to stay on that, so we're not screwing, ballpark's all a mess and things. A safety issue, too, with people running around, if you get all tore up all summer long.
Are you looking for a motion here tonight at all? Is it just an up, strictly an update?
It's directing staff, myself, and Bolton Make to, to create plans and specs. You'd come back and have a formal motion to approve those plans and specs and authorize advertisement for bid, so you'd have one more chance to look at it and approve those plans and specs, and, but Bolton Make put that out for, put it on the street for contractors to bid on.
Council, any questions of either Dave or Mr. Miller?
No questions from me. I would like to say, just for the record, I do have a, my father-in-law has got a memorial stone over there, so I'm all in favor of this.
So no, we don't need a formal motion, just want direction? I mean, I think, or would you prefer?
Let's make a, let's make a formal motion to approve staff to prepare plans and specs.
Okay. And I, a motion on that?
I'll make a motion that we direct staff to prepare the plans and specs for the work to be done, that's, as it's been laid out tonight.
Second?
I'd second that.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. Great. Thank you for all your work on this. We're, it's exciting and looking forward to seeing things start to come out of the ground down there.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. So, agenda item 8B, 2025 commission appointments. So is, many might know or may not know, we have very valued commissions that are set up throughout the city, Planning Commission, Parks, EDA, Cable Commission, Airport Commission. So each year, there are seats that come up, do. We went through an interview process with the, with the liaison to that commission, and then the chair. We've done those the last couple of weeks. There was somewhat of a heavy lift to get the, the Park and Recreation Commission reinstated. Some of you may know that we've not had that in place for two years, so it was a priority of the council here to get that in place. And so with that said, I don't know, Jolene, do we need one motion for all those, or do you want each individual, or each individual commission to be pointed?
That would be up to the council. I, I think you can certainly do it in one motion, if council's in agreement with the recommendations you've laid out in your memo.
Okay. Just a couple other items to mention. On that Parks Commission, just because it's brand-new, a startup, we did do tiered, so that, that all the commission members don't come off at the same time, so you'll notice that there's some that are at one year, a couple for two-year, and then three for, for three-year. So any discussion on how you want to handle this, council? Do you want to do one motion, or go through all, each separate commission?
I think it'd be acceptable to do one motion for all.
I agree.
Okay. I'll just, if someone wants to make a motion, I'm just going to read off the names, just for the public record, who, who we have up for appointment. Airport Commission is Curtis Amundsen and Mara Bain. EDA is Jonathan Wright. Parks and Rec Commission, Karen Moorhead, Sandra Mattson, Sue Herdina, Aaron Eckhart, Don Thiessen, Tim Gary, and Melissa Landmark. Before we motion, I just want to thank those individuals for their willingness to, to give back to the community in this way. It's very valued to have that input for the council to make these decisions. So thank you, and there's two, two in the crowd right now tonight, so appreciate that. Can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the commission members as recommended in tonight's meeting.
I'll second.
Motion, second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Item 8C, Congressional Staffer Space at City Hall. Amanda, you're going to lead us?
Thank you, Your Honor, Council. So the Congressman Pete Staber actually approached the mayor, wondering about renting some space in City Hall for his district office. And so congressmen have district offices throughout their district, and it's an opportunity for the constituents to be able to have access to their staff and for them to have, you know, locations within their, their area that they represent, where they can connect with the community and things like that. Currently, he has offices in Washington, DC, obviously, Brainerd, Cambridge, Chisholm, and Hermantown. He is interested in moving his Cambridge location to Forest Lake, and specifically Forest Lake City Hall. The U.S. House of Representatives has an office called the Office of Administrative Counsel, and they provide sort of the rules and the guidance on how something like this would happen. They have a boilerplate lease that they do. They do have some unique requirements for their lease terms, but nothing that I think is, is of significant concern. The benefits to the city in considering allowing the congressman to have a small amount of space here at City Hall is, is pretty obvious, right? It's the access to his office, it's his exposure to this very city, to the downtown. His staffers will be going to Stewie's for lunch or whatever, you know, that kind of thing, that that's a really helpful thing for the city. This is not in any way partisan. His, the way that it works, if, if the city wanted to do this, I would reach out to his office to get the lease going, although, like I said, we would use the boilerplate from the Office of Administrative Counsel. And it's just for his term, so it ends in January of 2027. At that point, whomever is elected to the seat, they have the right to choose where they would want their district offices. Again, it's not a party-affiliated thing. A couple things to note, actually, just today, I reached out to the county, property tax county, Washington County assessor, to make sure that if we lease him space, we don't somehow lose our tax-exempt status for the City Hall. Her answer was definitely not if we lease him at a no-lease rate or a nominal lease rate, potentially if you want to charge him a market-rate rent. Looking at what Cambridge has done and Chisholm has done, the Cambridge lease was for $500 for the year, Chisholm was $2,400 for the year. Neither one of those would be market-rate rents. What staff has looked at is allowing him to utilize one of the conference rooms upstairs, and that would become his office space. Other than when we were doing interviews for the city administrator situation, I don't think we've ever had all of the conference rooms used at the same time. So from a city staff perspective, we don't see that being, you know, an issue in terms of space. So, and I'm so sorry, I should have gone down there and talked there. I just realized I did. My apologies. So, so anyways, the, the question to council tonight is, is this something you're interested in doing? You have no obligation to do it, but if it's something that you're interested in, then if you could give me authority to reach out to his office and work on a lease that would then be brought back to the council for consideration, it would, I think we could get a turnaround to be at the next, you know, at the next meeting this month. And if not, that's okay, too, you know, no harm, no foul either direction. I stand for questions. I sit for questions.
Any, council, any questions for Amanda to start?
No questions. I just think it would be a nice addition to, to the community, and, you know, knowing that we've got the space, I guess I'd like to, to see us move forward with this.
So, yeah, I guess I don't have anything for Amanda, so I'll just open up for just general comments and...
I guess my comment would be, and I think, Amanda, you answered it, but I guess I defer to staff, you know, do we have the space? Would it be a, a problem if we rented that space or somehow worked that space out? And, and do we have it in a private room where it's not? I'm not sure what they'd be looking for, you know, most of our conference rooms, aren't they mostly glass?
They are, councilmember, they do have glass windows. They do have shades that we can pull over those windows. The space upstairs is very seldom used, especially the smaller of the two conference rooms up there. I, I don't envision that if these staffers are here, it's not going to probably be 40 hours a week, it'll be sporadic, and, and I think it'd be a good use of that space. And unfortunately, those rooms sit vacant quite often, so to get some activity up there, I think would be a positive here at City Hall.
And then my only other question would be, you know, pros and cons, you know? I'm trying to be, trying to be bipartisan. What would be pros and cons to the city? Some of the income would be nice to have. Maybe getting more attention to our city would be nice to have.
If I get, so my thoughts on that, very pro. And this, just to be clear, this would be regardless of if it was a Republican, a Democrat, or an independent that was, you know, in that, in that office. I think it's just to have that open connection to someone who's in, in DC, to have our staff have a connection, or be able to go upstairs and talk to his staff on, on items, I think is great. And then just an extra service, I mean, the taxpayers have paid for this building, so for them to have that ability to come into this building and talk to a staffer from a Congress, you know, one of our congressmen, I think is really important. And so, you know, we would be clear that it is, it is nonpartisan, we would, it would open, the software would be open to anyone that was in that seat. And they were real, I mean, I don't know how it does, happens with, you know, we do have elections in that room, I think, so I think that, that, I don't know how that works, if that office would be closed during those days or something, I'm sure other city halls do that. And they did make, in my conversations with the congressman, it was very clear, this is not campaign office at all. It's strictly business of the district.
And then just one last question. Do we know on average how often the congressman might be here, other than staff?
So just with my knowledge of getting to know Congressman Staber, you know, he does drive, he does typically drives from Minneapolis to Duluth, where his main office and where he lives. So his idea, too, is part of the reason of moving it here, is being able to get to this office much easier than the current office in Cambridge. And he pointed out that Forest Lake is the second-largest city in the district behind Duluth, so that's important to him, to, to be able to be closer, closest to where the majority of the people are in the south. And so I would suspect he'd be through fairly often.
Good. Great.
The motion on that, or just giving, to direct? Do you want a motion to?
If you, if you could just make a general motion that you would like me to move forward, and, just one point of order. Because of, because of what I learned from the county today on the tax-exempt status, I'm assuming council does not want a lease that would remove our tax-exempt status for City Hall. So whatever the lease rate is, it's going to have to be low enough that the county won't have a problem with it. And I can run that, you know, through the county once we get a number, but just confirming, we got to keep, it's going to be low.
Yeah. Okay. Great. With that said, anyone want to make a motion on this?
I'll make a motion for Amanda to reach out to the 8th District Congressional Office, for them to have an office here.
Second? Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Have resolution to accept donations for the Veterans Memorial. Mr. Miller had mentioned a number of, let me find where the, sorry. Number of people have donated, we've been doing these here the last couple meetings, so I'm going to just list the donors in this resolution. So Roberts Funeral Service, $3,500, Hallberg Foundation, $2,500, and Running Aces. So I would make a motion to accept with gratitude, Resolution 02102502, accepting donations for Veterans Memorial Project. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Discussion?
Blake, I would ask that you consider amending your motion. You mentioned Hallberg Family Foundation for $2,500, it looks like it's $25,000.
Thank you for that correction. Yes, $25,000. Thank you. You have a second?
I would still second that motion.
Okay. All right. No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Motion carries. So we moved on to the discussion part of our meeting, after there's no decisions to be made, this is just strictly discussion. We had asked, with everything going on, there's a lot of different projects coming up in the next year or two, getting started this year, so asked Ryan Goodman from Bolton Make to give us an update on where things are. Things have been changing calendar-wise and for different reasons, so Ryan, I'll give it to you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'm not going to read through it word for word, so definitely ask any questions you might have, but I'll just start with the Reeca Avenue. Basically, we're in a holding pattern right now, where easement documents have been sent off to the DNR. It was submitted in October, or August of 2024, and having to go through the federal review process, that sometimes can take over a year. If we still, still, stay within that year, we're looking to then, you know, have the project bid, and what would occur in '26 would be a surcharge being placed out on the area where the road is being widened to accommodate... the road is being widened to accommodate for the trail facilities. So that would just be the only work in '26. Road still would be open to construction, where it's still targeting 2027 for construction, and that will stage well with the Highway 97 project, too, I'll get to lastly. North Shore Trail and Local Street Project, that's been, you know, discussed for a long time. Since the Local Street Project's in that area, we'll just bid it as one project, so we're not having two contractors run over each other and just do a dual process for no reason, same scope of work. Tuesday, February 18th, you guys are off Monday. Tuesday, February 18th, will be our public open house for this project, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM upstairs in the community room. So if there's, there'll be a short PowerPoint presentation, just kind of give an overbroad view of the project, what to expect during construction, what type of construction process will be going on and stuff like that. So, so we plan to talk about there. And then Broadway Avenue Maintenance Project, remember that project was bid by the county last year, but the pricing came in very high. So they relooked at that project delivery and rebid it and are ready to move into construction this, this spring and hope to have everything done well before the Fourth of July. And just hot off the press today, they finalized the public open house dates will be March 4th. It's actually gonna be held at the Forest Lake Area Schools Early Childhood Family Education Building, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM on March 4th. So they're holding it in the school, just so it's close to the business owners with the idea, maybe that some might walk over or stuff like that, just trying to mix it up. We've had a, quite a few public open houses here. Tendence has been zero to five, so change of scenery, closer to the businesses. Hopefully, maybe we can attract some interest in that, just so they're more up to date on everything. Obviously, they've been, have mailers and other communication as that project has proceeded and timelines with that.
Quick question, did they change their budget for that, or did they change the scope of service?
They did take out some of the stuff that was on the very west end, and the on-ramps, off-ramps, the bridge deck area, that they couldn't come to an agreement on what requirements would be for traffic control and MINDOT and how it could affect other things going on in the area because of other projects. So they just eliminated that portion of the project for now, and just gonna focus on the area, basically, where Chase Bank's being built to the, to the roundabout up here. And nothing within the roundabout right now unless MINDOT were to package something and come behind them, but for now, it's not anticipated to be included in that. Highway 97 Project, that's the big one, that's gonna be a two-year project, that's gonna start in '25, and they'll work on the west end. That's what we first heard, right, for staging, and this is the one, and it flops, looking to potentially do the east side first. But now they're going to be working on the west end in 2025 from Hornsby to Fenway, and that will be completely shut down when they build that because of the depth of poor soil excavation that needs to occur, that you couldn't possibly bridge traffic way up there and have workers going on it, or even if, even if you had sheet piling along the whole entire road, it would be, have to be way higher than the road, otherwise stuff was gonna fall in. We got some spots, 20 feet, a lot of long spots of 10-foot of excavation of poor soils that'll be taken out of that area. And then in '26, they'll come back with the east end, and that'll be from Fenway to Forest Road. So that'll be a great improvement, and if we're not that familiar with that scope of work or the project that's gonna go on yet, or need a refresher, they are having a pre-construction public open house, March 11th, 4:00 PM to 6:00 PM, right here at City Hall, up in the community room. So that'll be another good one to get some information ads. Those are kind of the high level of the major projects that are in the area. Highway 8 is probably gonna be due for an update here soon, based on what we might know or not, as they work through the environmental documents. So some of that will be coming here within the months. And one that's not on here is, because it's a little further out, is County State Highway 32, also known as 11th Avenue or 220th, depending on what map you look at, right here, across Winnick. That's a 27 project, and that's, was earmarked for that year, just so it avoids the Highway 97 project, and stayed away from the Broadway maintenance stuff as well. For your lease agreement you just approved, if you want to tie something into that, that you have to say yes to our funding in March, that would be better than any rent we could ask for. So that's, that's the big milestone of that project. We're hoping to hear positive news in March of this year, on whether or not we got a bunch of extra funding for that project that would allow us to do the ultimate scope of the work that's been presented at the public open houses. And other stuff that's kicked off almost since we've prepared this is, you know, the county's working forward on an RFP down at the intersection of County Road 50 and Trunk Highway 61, that's leading up to a potential 2028 or '29 intersection project there. So you got that going on and too, and then MINDOT's also in the middle of an RFP for a study from Highway 8 to 180th. So Dave and I have met with one of the consultants that, you know, they're trying to prepare their proposals, they've come in and asked tons of questions about the corridor, local issues, concerns, things that need to be addressed in that study, so, so that's in progress too. So a lot of transportation stuff, which again, lines well with who might be sitting up in City Hall here in the next, whatever timeframe, but definitely gonna be a lot of funding needs and requests, too.
That study, is that part of a potential turnback, or is that separate?
This will be separates, but that county study, that's what included the turnback stuff, that's, those, gotta get ultimate finalization, so.
What's the plan for rerouting traffic off of 97 for the next two years?
They'll have a local detour set up and then a major detour, so the detour in the past, when we've had some of these major recons, even the two double roundabouts, goes out as far as Manning Avenue and down to County Road 4 sometimes, or the Highway 8s, will be in and out with the 97 project before too many impacts start happening on Highway 8s. It's still hard to tell where they're at with Highway 8 and environmental stuff. That'll be stuff that'll be talked about at this project, or at the public open house too, but there'll definitely be very well-signed detours in place. And those are coordinated very closely with public safety. Even when we just did the 35 project, or some of the other bigger county or state projects in the area, they were very engaged with public safety, fire, and police, even just when they would stage traffic on that 35 project, just because of our joint agreement with Columbus and other areas they got to get to, so they would know how to access those areas during construction, so there isn't any surprises. There's weekly meeting, construction meetings that go on with these types of projects that usually public safety attends these. There might be one just with like the contractors, and then before or after that, same one each week is the one that's a little bigger, that includes more staff and public safety or school district officials too as well.
Has, and some of those businesses on 97 that are completely, any pushback or conversations with like QuickTrip and Grunhofer's and...
QuickTrip knows very well about the project coming up, with our conversations with them. We've been working with them all year, or year and a half now at this point in time on their application, and they already went, and they knew about it coming up, and, you know, ultimately, what's coming in front of them, and they had the decision whether to move forward or not, or sit in tight, or do it at the same time, and they finally, they actually just submitted today their final application to the city to do their, their site expansion. No building expansion, but parking lot expansion, and they've already gone through the permitting with the watershed, because they want to get all their other stuff done before they came back to the city. So anticipated that was gonna be at the Planning Commission in March for QuickTrip site approval.
But what has cities done in the past, especially more so on the smaller, the smaller businesses in that strip mall, to help promote detours or just something, I mean, to be completely shut off? I know you can get there from the south, but that's gonna be, the impact for them is just gonna be horrible.
Yeah, so they'll have access, you know, from different routes, and will want to publicize that on our social media avenues that we have. They're obviously gonna do a very good process with that. I don't know if they'll be hiring specifically out, or consultant to handle their communications. They did do that on the I-35 project. They have built up some internal communications teams too, but there'll definitely be a lot of communications from MINDOT or a consultant they hire separately too, or it might be part of their bid package that the contractor has to do some of that stuff as well, but there's, it's not gonna be like, you're not gonna know where we can't go or not go. There'll be maps available, we posted out, there'll be, you know, sometimes they even hand out extra maps to hand to the businesses, to the customers. There'll be QR codes to, for them to get, you know, up to date, updates as the project proceeds, and ultimately, if somebody is struggling with all that, they'll probably call City Hall, then it'll just get, you know, forwarded to me, then we'll just make that one-on-one personal connection we have to, to help whoever we need to during those types of projects.
And listen, when 20, when this year, will that west end be closed?
Well, they can't do anything until the spring load restrictions get off and it's awarded. So, you know, I don't know what their exact start date is at this point. I would anticipate they're probably gonna hit it in May sometime, plus or minus 15 days in there.
Close down, fully close down as soon as May?
May to easily, October, to October, depending on how well they get through those soils. And that area gets full curb and gutter, too. So there's, it's just not, come in and bring your aggregate base and build the road and shape it, and then go pave it like a traditional road out in the middle, nor in a rural area. Concrete curb and gutters was the design choice through there because of the permitting requirements, they needed to shrink up their footprint because of the impact to the wetlands in that area. That's a very prestigious wetland complex, and our land in there, and it's been very hard to permit anything in there. So to get a trail on the entire south side through that project, kudos to the project team there, because that was not easy, and having just amount of different designs and concepts and cross-sections they had to go through, and which takes a lot of time and money, but ultimately, we're gonna have a 10-foot trail that's gonna connect all the way through, and then that's interchange there at 35, and you can get all the way to Columbus West Side now, and here you can now go hit the Hardwood Creek Trail when this project's done. And then down the, down the roadway after this project's done, and your capital improvement plan, we have Fenway Avenue, that includes that trail extension along with that pavement maintenance project, so now it will be connected all the way down to Headwaters. You're gonna have some really nice loops when these transportation projects are done in here.
Are questions for Ryan? I just wonder, and maybe I missed as well, starting on North Shore, what, do you have a date on that?
We would hope to be able to start in May, you know, I don't, it hasn't been terrible winter, so maybe you could start a little earlier, but generally, you get going pretty hard at it in May.
And is that in sections too, where you, will, will we close at one time or at all, or do you know that...
Yep, we'll talk about that at the public open house too, but first thing, we'll target the storm sewer crossings, so there'll be temporary closings for that, but we won't come and reclaim the road at that point in time until we get closer to that stage of construction. So all your crossings, we'll want to complete first. In one section of Hayward, there's sewer pipe at about 140 feet that needs to be dug up and replaced. It's not flowing through there, and it's been an area that we've known about for a long time, and it's kind of been pushed to, it actually lines up well with this project, but we just didn't have the funding in place to deal with it until now, and with all the other roads gonna be done in the area, you gotta deal with it now, otherwise you're gonna come back and go run over all your brand-new roads to fix something that's been there 15-plus years. We've known about it from, because Public Works will go out and do televise in the sewer lines, when we know we're kind of going with our next street project, so if there is something major like this, we'll deal with it, and instead of just putting a new surface on the road. Some of the stuff, we can deal trenchless, but this is too big of a pipe, a flat of a grade, you gotta go down and get it, so.
I know early on, we talked about potentially a shift in the road, so that they're potentially could have a larger shoulder on one side, is that still in the, is that out?
The footprint member is not getting any wider.
Right, but I thought we, we would shift the lines over so one shoulder potentially could be wider than the other. That was, I thought, a conversation at one point that we had.
I can look into that, I don't think that's been accounted for.
Yeah, so not to, you know, no, no larger footprint, but if, if the idea would be to narrow, push it to one side, and then the other side, you'd have a larger shoulder, just more safety for pedestrians and bike, I think that's something we should look at potentially, just to, because we couldn't get that trail through there?
That's an easy change, and I didn't get into the striping plan, so maybe they even narrowed up the driveway lanes per what they are right now, so that's one thing you can do. It's a state aid route, so we'll look at, you know, you know, annually, and annually daily traffic to, you know, to make sure that we're in all those rules and requirements, but you can sometimes go a little narrower than what they had out there, or we could shift it one way, too. So we'll bring that back before we finalize that. That's no big deal.
Questions for Ryan? Thanks for the updates, appreciate that. All right, we're not staff updates, and we just have two staff here, well, obviously, but you've let a lot of people have the day off, so that's great, the evening off, so Jolene, go ahead.
Just real briefly, Mayor and Council, just a note, City Hall's gonna be closed on Monday, the 17th, in observance of President's Day. We're back on the 18th, which is when our new city administrator, Mark Stotts, will be starting, followed that day by the open house, like Ryan mentioned, for the North Shore Trail Project here at City Hall upstairs, and immediately following that open house, we're gonna roll into City Council's workshop. So busy day on Tuesday, the 18th. That's all I have, unless anyone has questions for me.
Dave, anything?
Nothing major, other than we got a bunch of snow this weekend, plans are to be have downtown cleared out by the end of this week, wait for temperatures to go back up, it's down there when it's this cold out, so you got a bunch of cleanup around town to pick up snow piles and keep cleaning up trails, so, but by the end of this week, we should have.
Grab on, on all that for everyone. Ryan, you need anything else?
I guess the only thing I would add is, you can just feel it's, and amount of conversations and stuff that's coming forward, it seems to be a very, residential subdivision stuff seems to be getting hot right now. So I would anticipate a lot of those steps coming forward to you guys. Some are, some are in concept plans, some are obviously going through building permits, and then there's some that are getting pretty thick into the weeds on some other parcels, so it'd be a good year for that.
Amanda, do you have anything?
Yes, so in your weekly update was kind of a longer update regarding some work that I've been doing with the Forest Lake Police Department related to cryptocurrency kiosks that are located within the city, and just the significant amount of fraud that is going through those machines. Mentioned in the update that in 2023 and 2024, in the four machines that, and actually only three of the machines in the city, over $300,000 was fraudulently stolen. So this is pretty significant. I have reached out to Minister of Department of Commerce and the League to try to get some assistance from those two groups, but Detective Olstad is incredible, and he's, he's been doing a ton of work behind the scenes to try to do more than just say, "I'm so sorry, your money is gone." We've been working also with Woodbury. Woodbury since 2021 has lost over $6.6 million in cryptocurrency fraud. These are huge numbers. So I realized, before we get too much cart in front of horse, I wanted to give the council the opportunity to ask any questions, sort of, you know, preliminary questions tonight. The intention is that he and I will be presenting at a work session. I want to wait until Mark Stotts starts, trying to get him caught up, but ideally, within the next 30 days, we're in front of you with some ideas for, I hesitate to say solutions, because this is a problem that is so much larger than just the city, but at least some ideas to protect the people who live here. Overwhelmingly, the victims are elderly or vulnerable populations. Overwhelmingly, the victims are elderly or vulnerable populations, and some of the stories, we will share some of the, the stories, but are just gut-wrenching. But for the purposes of tonight, I, I wanted to give you all the opportunity, if you had some, just really preliminary questions or concerns that, you know, you give, give me a heads up now, so we can pivot if needed or whatever.
Question, so, I mean, if there, these kiosks are present in our city, they must at some level be legal and authorized, true?
Yes, so obviously cryptocurrency is not regulated like traditional forms of currency, and that is, it's a lure, and it's also part of its, part of why fraud, people who are committing fraud are very interested in crypto. The state did pass some legislation this last year, requiring crypto kiosks to be licensed with the state. What we are suggesting is not going to license them, because that's, we're basically preempted by the state in that capacity. They were hoping they could create some things in this statute that was passed this last year to protect these, the victims, and unfortunately, immediately, there was a very obvious workaround in terms of what was created, and so it has not been helpful. The kiosks themselves, I don't know how familiar I am with cryptocurrency, but the kiosks themselves, you go, you put in cash, that's all, you can't pay for it any other way, you put in cash, and you buy crypto in the machine. The machines that we have in, in Forest Lake do not allow you to cash out your crypto, so it's not going to go the other way. In other words, I can't go and say, I'm gonna sell my current, my cryptocurrency, and you're going to shoot out $10,000 at me. It's, it's just one way. There are machines that do both, but that's not the way that these are set up. But something that I think is important to know, the vast majority of these machines have a markup of 30%. So in other words, if I'm going to purchase my cryptocurrency through this machine, there's a 30% markup on the price versus if I was just going to go online and buy it. So from a investment perspective, there isn't a lot of legitimate investing that's going to happen through these machines, because a savvy investor is not going to pay a 30% market.
And, and that's not something that cities can ban or do go, I mean, that kinda?
Yeah, that was the original call from Detective was, can we ban these? And I said, oh, I wanna say yes so bad, but I think we're gonna run afoul of the Constitution and a couple of things, so, but that said, I do think we've come up with a really good idea where we regulate kind of indirectly, but that regulation eliminates anybody who basically allows fraud to run through their machines, because interestingly enough, we do have one machine in the city, so one that's located in Cub Foods, that has never had complaint of fraud. So what's different in how they run their machine, I couldn't begin to tell you, but there's something, because it's a machine that these fraudsters are not telling the victims to go to, they're having them go to other machines, and there's some machines that have maximum limits, so in a day, they might send their poor victim to like six or seven machines, not just in Forest Lake, but in Columbus, in Woodbury, in other communities, and so that is why we're trying to get a larger group. Like Detective Olstad is part of a cryptocurrency sort of forum group that he's on, and everybody on that group is asking, what's an, what can we do, you know, what's an ordinance? And so we are asking the council to, to consider kind of being on the forefront of this. This is something that is going to take more than just state action or federal action because of the, the nature of this fraud, it's, it's just kind, you know, I think everybody is going to kinda have to work together to protect these populations that are being targeted. Woodbury, the Woodbury, their detective unit and their chief has already told me, as soon as you have this ordinance, I wanna see it, like, let's go, we're ready to, because there is going to be a strength in numbers on this one.
Anything that the League is working on?
They are resistant to pick it up, because they have already established their legislative priorities for the year, and this was not one of them, and they do not wanna add anything to their list. I have, instead, what I'm trying to work with the League on is if we put forth an ordinance and it goes forward, aside from all of the vetting that I'm doing from the Department of Commerce and getting the, their general counsel to bless the ordinance and give me some nice words we can put in a, in a staff memo and thing like, things like that, I want the League to cover us if we get sued. And so that's sort of more where I'm going with the League is, I want, you need to cover this. If we're trying to protect people, we need your help. So that, that's kind of where they've reluctantly been more willing to cooperate.
How concerned do we need to be about being sued by people committing fraud?
Well, committing the fraud, they're not going to sue us, they're, they're overwhelmingly not located in the United States, right, they're presumably someplace else, and by the time, I mean, the money is gone, you know, well, interestingly, it's not though, because somebody has deposited cash into that machine, and so there is tons of cash sitting in that machine, and somebody's picking it up. So Iowa and Ohio are actually seizing these machines, their police departments are as instrument in the crime. So far, the direction that, that, the, I mean, the police have here is, they're not really comfortable doing that, that becomes a bit burdensome in terms of actually seizing those machines, and there's some reasons why that might not be the best solution right now. It's also being fought about at the Supreme Court, so they were sued for taking those machines, and we'll see if that's going to stand or not, but, yeah, so, so there's, there's a, there's a lot of really interesting things about this, but it's definitely something that's happening all, all the time, I mean, it's surprising how many of these victims are out there, that, according to Detective Olstad, they estimate that the reported, reported amounts are about a third of what actually is happening.
Is there a communication plan that we have, whether that be through the newspaper or, you know, I know the police department does scam training at the community center or what have you, I mean, is there a communication plan that's possible around this?
Yeah, that is something that the detectives are also working on, is in terms of getting this in front of a larger audience, and, and absolutely, they are doing tons of trainings with, they partner with AARP, and they do trainings with them. On this, on the kiosks right now, we have signs that say, you know, warning, basically, be careful, all, that kind of thing, but these scammers are incredibly sophisticated, and that's not going to be enough, but largely because the scams are telling the victim that they are the law enforcement, and so they're pretending that there's some outstanding warrant, or there's something, so they're, they're already acting as though they are the, the law. So it's, it's incredibly heartbreaking, frankly. But the good news is, you guys have some amazing detectives that are not willing to just sort of stand by and let it happen.
Thanks for that. I'm with Council, Jeff, do you have anything?
I have nothing, thank you.
Nope, not tonight.
Kevin?
I have nothing.
Nothing from you?
I just have a few things. Jolene mentioned that Mark will be starting with us, our new city administrator, Mark Stotts. It's been a while, it seems like a long time ago that we hired him, so it'll be great to have him on board. He will be, has been said before, drinking from a fire hose, there's a lot of things for him to learn, but I just wanna thank Jolene, all you've done, especially since September, but really since you've been here, to help us get through this. I don't know how we could have done it without you, from the, the hiring process to running day-to-day operations, and really all, every staff member, especially department heads have all stepped up and, and played an extra role, so, but thank you so much for that. And just one more welcome to Kevin, looking forward to working with you and doing some great things.
Thank you, I'm looking forward to working with all of you.
So I, Jolene gave me a little trick about how closing these meetings, we can change that up a little bit, so with no other, no other business coming forward, I'm gonna adjourn the meeting at 7:58.